The Lord is good and all the time. I'm glad we are here together as we come almost to the conclusion of this coming meeting session and just to wind up the discussion we've been having for the last couple of days. I want to say I'm excited to have been able to share the word of God and it's always a blessing to have the chance and privilege to break the bread of life through the various means God has given to us. I can see consistency in certain class members who've been coming here every day. I pray that God may continue to bless you. And with that, I'm happy that we at least have consistency in remembering, recapping what you've studied probably through the first day. I think up till today. Maybe if I ask randomly, what did we talk about yesterday? If someone was attentive, anything you learnt yesterday? I'll spare you the embarrassment because of the camera, but I'll remind us, we talked about the death, life and resurrection of Jesus Christ. You remember that very well? And coincidentally, the speaker of the hour, Divine Hour, also reminded us about resurrection. I believe that it means that God had, was intentional to have us learn something on the resurrection. If you remember very well at the beginning, I may have quoted a statement that the resurrection of Jesus Christ is significant to the life of a Christian. That if you omit resurrection, then I can say that we don't exist as Christians and therefore it forms the basis of our faith. It is resurrection. We also said, we also read this precaution in the book of 2 Timothy, chapter 2, verse 16 to 18, that Paul writes to Timothy, I believe it's relevant to us also, that reminded us to avoid godless church. And maybe just to get to the lesson of today, before we get there. When we see Jesus the cross, when he dies, he'll say something in John, chapter 19, verse 30. To Tellus, in other words, it is finished because he had paid it all in full for you and I. Praise God. So with that understanding, I want to say that the grass withers, the flower fades, but the word of the Lord remains the same. Let us pray. Gracious Father in heaven, we are aware that Lord, you still have an opportunity for us to serve you. You've given us another moment to even experience a different kind of weather, just to remind us, Lord, we are alive. Thank you for the word that you've always given us and thank you for what you're about to share with us this morning. Guide us even through this session in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Our study today is about this church, new life in Christ. It's about new life in Christ. Maybe start with a question. How many of us are born Adventists? Born Adventists? One, two, three, four. Wow. Can I say again? How many are born Adventists? One, two, three, four, five. Oh, congratulations. I've never met people who are born Adventists. You're the first ones I've seen in this world. So you're born Adventist. How does it feel to be born an Adventist? It's awesome. I mean, you're baptized inside your mother's womb, then you become an Adventist in the stomach. I want to remind us that no one is born an Adventist. But you can be born from an Adventist family. Praise God. So if you think you were born an Adventist, I'm here to tell you, you're not born an Adventist. You were born a sinner like me and it's until you make the decision to become an Adventist. So I just want to say that this salvation cannot be, you can't tap it from your family and say, ah, since my father is a Christian, I'm also a Christian. No. So none of us in this congregation was born an Adventist. Before I get to the session, I'll focus on two books, the book of Romans and Corinthians. Paul speaks about new life. I know we've talked about different subjects, the life of Christ, the death of Christ, the resurrection, but I want us to now zero into ourselves. But as I say that, I am tempted to just touch on a bit on the Old Testament. The Old Testament gives us a story of one of the prominent people that is spoken of, a giant, I think he's also a hero of faith, Jacob. You know Jacob, right? We read the story of Jacob and we know his history of how he is born and we know how he even makes his brother to sell his birth rites. And you know, actually, he just sold it because of something called dengue. You've read Swahili, the version of the Bible. This guy drank dengue enough that he sold it. So hungry that he sold it. The birthright had many significant things in the life of a Christian. Oh, the birthright signified that, you know, there are many advantages that came from being, you know, as Esau being a firstborn, but he sold it to his brother. And the story doesn't end there. This guy will end up, Jacob, in the book of Genesis, chapter 27, I think from verse 19 or 18, he will be so sinful, let me call that, basic sinful, that he'll even go ahead, you know, try to lie to his father who is about to die. I'm gonna read this text for us to see. The book of Genesis 29. This is now 27 rather, sorry, beg your pardon. The father is about to die and he calls, he goes to his father in verse 18. So he went to his father and said, my father. And he said, here I am. Who are you, my son? The father asks him and Jacob said to his father, he's who? Esau. He just said, I'm Esau. That's what he said. You're firstborn. I have done just as you told me. Please arise. Sit it of my game that your soul may bless me. So this guy is seeking for blessing, but not his blessings. He didn't even deserve this. So from this moment, of course, we know that he'll be blessed and he'll run away. He'll be a man on the run, like you and I as Christians. And he'll try everything possible. Unfortunately, when he'll go to his uncle's side, he'll also be received. So this person has lost his identity from the very onset. He's living a life that is not his. And perhaps that's the situation we found ourselves as Christians, born in, you know, we're born in sin, Adam. But we don't, we can't boast of being converted until we belong to Christ by faith. So in simple terms, I'm just saying that it wasn't, it was impossible, or it's impossible for us to boast and say that we are born Adventist. And now after he runs, chapter 32, I like chapter 32, I'm gonna connect, then I start my study. In chapter 32 of the same, same book of Genesis. Now, the Richard point where now he'll get back to himself, this same guy that I'm mentioning called Jacob. In chapter 32, verse 22, and he arose that night and took his two wives, his two female servants, his 11 sons and crossed over the ford of Jebuch. Verse 23, he took them, sent them over the brook and set over what he saw here. Then verse 24, then Jacob was, was, did you get that point? He took everything he had. He has lived all these years accumulated wealth, his fathers blessed him and he didn't even serve the blessings. But there's a, the verse says, until Jacob was left, left, he was left alone. The things that we never change in our lives until we are left alone. It gets to this point now, he's left alone. Now listen, after he says, left alone, and a man wrestled with him until the day breaking of day. Now, when he saw that he did not prevail against him, he touched the socket of his hip and socket of Jacob's hips was out of his joint, he wrestled him. And he said, let me go for the day breaks. But he said, I will not let you go until you bless me. Remember in chapter 27, we had read, when his father asked his name, what was his name? Jacob said, you're who? Esau. Now look at chapter 32, as we do the study. In verse 27, chapter 32, verse 27, so he said to him, what is your name? He said, who? Now, no, not Esau, come on. Look at your Bible. If that Bible is Chinese, I'll give you an English one. Just go to chapter 32, it's not Esau, chapter 32, verse 27. What does it say? What is your name? What did he say? Jacob, now he has wrestled God, now he has found a new, he now comes back to himself. And he said, for sure, I've been living a lie all this time. But now after wrestling, after being left alone, now he accepts his identity. He said, for sure, I am Jacob. But previously I'd lied. Now he said, your name shall no longer be Jacob, but Israel, for you have struggled with God, with men, and have prevailed. Praise God. So we see an identity change in the life of this Jacob after he's gone through all these things. He had lived a life of lies for a very long time. He lied about his name. He was lied to. He accumulated everything. But until he left everything and was left alone and God changed him. So this is our position now, that we have to make a choice of the direction we want to take our life. Now, I want us to look at the book of Romans and Corinthians. I'll be very brief. The book of Romans, chapter 5, verse 10. Romans 5, verse 10. I'm gonna read it, says, for if while we were God's enemies, we were reconciled to him through the death of who? His son. How much more having been reconciled shall we be saved through his life? So our salvation will be through his life. So we can't gain anything on our own. Jacob tried and even covered himself with something that wasn't his. He changed his external identity to gain the blessings. But that wasn't sufficient until he was left alone. Now, we come to this text again, says, we shall be saved through his life. Now get to next verse 11, says, therefore, chapter 5, verse 18, sorry, chapter 5, verse 18 now. I hope you're getting, we are getting somewhere, chapter 5, verse 18. Therefore, as through one month's offense, judgment came to all men, resulting in condemnation. We're talking about the new life, in condemnation. Even so, through one month's rations act, the free gift came to all men, resulting to justification of life. Now, our status before, I'm gonna explain this further. Therefore, our status is that we are judged, all men are judged. But again, through one man, all men can receive the gift. So when we walked into this world, or probably here, we came, we were judged because of this one's act. But now again, we can give this gift. My principle is very simple. I'm gonna explain this, it's gonna be easy, very easy. Now, in salvation, God deals with us individually. Are we together? It is also true that God deals with us cooperatively. I'm explaining that previous text. Now, we are lost in Adam while we are redeemed in Christ. Now I've explained that verse. In Adam, we are lost. We are lost. If we stay there. But in Christ, we are redeemed. What is redemption? Someone can say, what's redemption? The word redeem is to do what? Yes. You paid twice for it. Yeah, it belongs to you. Someone else, what does redemption mean? Yes. To restore. Thank you. Someone else, redeem. When you hear redeem, I know you sing this in your church many times. To restore, yes. To buy back, right? So this initially was meant, was yours, but now you bring it, it's given back to you. And therefore, it's in Christ. Christ buys back that which was lost. And there you're bought. Something else here. What is done to us is in Adam, is undone in Christ. Are we together? What is done to us in Adam is undone in Jesus Christ. And that's why day one, I ask you a very simple question. Are you of Christ? Are you of Christ? Are you for Christ? Are you in Christ? Yes. So in, what is done to us in Adam is undone only in Jesus Christ. And I've been trying to believe in this point from day one, to remind us that we cannot attain salvation on our own. You can't. And I even gave you a very simple text in the book of Genesis, chapter 3, that when the first parents sinned, they tried to cover themselves, but it's only Christ who was able to cover them completely. What Christ did was permanent. The man tried to do something that was temporal, but it's only through Christ. And we discovered that something, an animal had to die because of our sin. Therefore, because of our sin of our parent, it has been done by Adam, but with the coming of Christ, it is undone. Now, when the Bible says, let me look at this text. I think I, this text, Romans 5, verse 19. Let's go to Romans 5, verse 19. Romans 5, 19 says, for us by one month's disobedience, many were made sinners. So also by one month's obedience, many will be made rations. This study, this study, every new life I should know, because you're talking about new life. But now not just new life, but new life in Christ. So by one month's disobedience, many were made sinners. Who is this one man? Who is this one man? Adam, I hope we are together. So also by one month's obedience, many will be made rations. Now, if you agree with that, say amen. And therefore, the word that has been used in the Greek here for made sinners, it simply suggests to be appointed, to be put in charge, to be put in some category, to be put in some class, to be made, like because of sin, you're classified, you are a sinner, not because of what you did, but because of Adam, now you're here. I'm gonna read something here, I forgot to say, in Christ, we have been categorized and made rations. The same, we've been made, the same way we've been made sinners, but in Christ, we automatically find ourselves in the category of those who are rations. Praise God. So this word is to make, to be made, not necessarily to, not necessarily to mean that the whole mankind was made sinful and therefore we are liable to sin, but we are put in some category. So because of Adam's sin, so we find ourselves in that category of sinners. And in Christ, we fall in the category of people that we made rations. So it's up to us to choose which category to belong to. I hope you're together so far. Now, Romans 5, verse 14 says this, nevertheless, death reigned from Adam to Moses, even over those who had not sinned according to the likeness of the transgression of Adam, who is a type of him who was to come. So the question I have today, if they're saying from Adam to Moses, what happens to an infant? Can someone help me? What's the fate of an infant? An infant is a sinner, right? Someone else, an infant is a sinner, right? Someone with a different opinion, what happens to an infant? Newborn baby. Just been born, has not even opened the eyes. Doctor, I will ask you to answer because you're a medic. But no, this one is, this is very spiritual. This one, I will excuse you. So an infant is a sinner. So someone asked, someone asked you a question, asked you, what's the fate of us, what's his fate, ultimate fate of an infant? What happens to an infant if they die? Because you've said that, we've all agreed that we are born in sin and we are born, we are born, we are Adams, right? So until we accept Christ. So what happens to an infant? Some years back, I went to, I was in, someone invited me for baptism, a child baptism, a child baptism in Rome. And actually, it was a vertical. And I saw the way everyone, like all relatives came from everywhere just to come and witness the baptism of this small child. And they came with gifts. You know, I have seen the way people come for baptism here. Baptizing, you go by yourself. It's a one-man show. But there, I noticed every, the grandparents traveled from far away to come and witness the child's baptism. You've never seen child baptism? I'm not talking about the Seventh Adventist in March. I'm talking about a child baptism. Don't you think that child, when he's baptized, is free? I can see someone doing this, yes. What's the fate of a small child? Perhaps that's why those people go first to have children baptized, so that they save them. What happens to that? What's the fate? I want, let's discuss this. What's the fate of a small child in case they die? Do they have hope? How? The Lord Christ covers them, covers a child who has not known Christ. Yes. Someone else? You can be, it can be audible so that I repeat. It's only God who knows the destiny of a child. Then that means like, even God knows my destinies. I don't have to accept him because that child probably have not. Only God knows the destiny. Someone else? Yes. The parent? Oh, so the children, this is another one. You guys need to be baptized tomorrow. So the children can be made whole because of the faith of their parents? Is that what you're saying? That they can rely on the faith of the parents? Is that possible? Hello? I asked at the beginning a very simple question, how many people are born Adventists? And I saw around six of you born Adventists. But now someone tells me here, the fate of the children is based on the faith of the parents. If the parents have faith and they're born, automatically they, then it means, even me, my grandfather was a pastor. It means now I'm safe. He did everything for me. I don't need to do everything. What's the fate of a child? Someone else? I think I kinda got an answer here. Yes. What happens to an infant if they die without accepting Christ, without getting old to accept Christ? What happens? Okay, they'd be saved because they don't have opportunity to learn about Christ and give their life to Christ. Thank you. Someone, are we okay there? Yes, elder? There's a microphone there because I just want us to be, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You can be audible, yes? Yes. 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 It says, a child was born, I want others to hear, the child was born a sinner and we have to accept that. You can continue, can I repeat again?
Yeah, we have to accept that. It's important that ones who are saved, they understand what they are accepting to this Christ. Now, the child is not, the one, the newborn baby, is not. And if you go to the book of First, First Samuel?
Yes.
Chapter 1, and God said to Samuel, I knew you before you were even conceived.
That is very much.
The book of Hebrews, the book of Hebrews reminds us, the one whom he has destined already has been chosen. So the child belongs to God in the context of God for knew that child. Even when the child died one day, the decision of God is up to the program of God. Because already, even if by natural circumstances a child dies, God has known the all of his life. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say this, there's something called the redeeming grace. We just talk about redemption here, right? When you have time, go and read the book of 1 Corinthians 7, verse 14. I'm not going to discuss it, but you can read 1 Corinthians, chapter 7, verse 14. You can get a hint of the answer, but what will make even that child whole is because of Christ redeeming grace. Are we together? There's someone who said this, I don't know, I don't know how true this is. There's a scholar who said that there'll be three surprises in heaven. The first surprise is that the people you least expect to get to heaven will be in heaven. The person you expect to get to heaven will not be in heaven. Then the third one is who? Is yourself. You'll be like, ayah, I made it. So you'll be like, I made it in heaven. So we rely on the redeeming grace of Christ. Praise God. Now, we've become sinners not by personal act on our past, but solely by that one disobedience of first Adam. So we are not sinners because even that child has not become a sinner because of what they've done. We become sinner not by any personal act on our part, but solely by that one disobedience of who, or the first Adam. So that makes us sinners automatically. But again, there's a good, there's good news. There's good news because Adam sinned, all the unborn ones in Adams were categorized made sinners. We've said that, you remember that? Because he sinned, all of us are categorized, but they sinned in Adam and God pronounced them sinners. They seemed like God pronounced them sinners, but there's hope. The book of 1 Corinthians, chapter 15. 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, I'm gonna read very fast because it's a Bible study, chapter 19, chapter 15 from verse 19. I hope I can be fast. If in this life only we have hope in Christ, we are all men, the most pitiable, verse 20, 20. But now Christ is risen from the dead and has become the first fruit of those who have fallen asleep, 21. For since by man came death, by man also came the resurrection of the dead. For as in Adam, all die, not some, all die, even so in Christ all shall be made alive. So if in, by Adam all die, but in Christ we're made alive. All that happened to us in Jesus is also a fact. If the truth is that it happened in Adam, therefore in Christ also it happens to us. Praise God. So if disobedience comes through Adam, then you can't escape the fact that in Christ also are made all. If one side is certain, the other is also certain. Now, in Adam, though you had done nothing personally, you are declared a sinner and experience the consequence of sin. We are experiencing the consequence of sin right now, you and I. But also in Christ. In Christ, you have not competed, you've competed nothing, but you've been claimed to be rations. So in short, we've contributed nothing in both. You become a sinner because of Adam, but also what Christ has done automatically makes you whole. Therefore, in salvation, in this aspect, this narrative, you remember the book of Romans 6, verse 23, we read it the other day. It says, the wedges of sin is, then there's a but, there's a conjunction there, but factor. Then but, the gift of God is what? Eternal life. So on the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry this side, I'm sorry this side, I'm gonna use a bad illustration. The wedges of sin is death, but the gift of, I'm not saying yours, I'm just, I'm illustration. Wedges of sin is death, but the gift of God is what? So next time, choose where to sit. But what I'm trying to use this is because they did nothing to sit here. You did nothing to be sinners. You found yourself sitting here. But then they also found themselves, they did nothing to become. Are you together? You both contributed nothing. But because there's Christ who comes on your behalf, he also makes you rations. Therefore, even us do that. There's something called the rations of God, rations of man. But now we trust and believe in the rations of God that makes us whole. Praise God. Ephesians, chapter 6, chapter 2, verse 3 to 5. Ephesians, chapter 2, verse 3 to 5. Ephesians, Galatians, Ephesians, chapter 2, verse 3 to 5. It says, among all, also, we all once conducted ourselves in the last of flesh, fulfilling the desires of flesh and also of the mind, and were by nature children of earth, but as others. But God, verse 4, but God, but God, who is rich in mercy because of his great love with his, which he loved us, even we, we were dead in trespasses, but made as alive together with Christ. By grace you have been saved. It is all because of your doing. It is It is not because of your doing, it is by grace. So even that child, infant, will experience Christ redeeming grace. Are we at par now? Therefore, our position in Adam is by? No, no, I just want to tell us through this text now, our position in Adam is by birth. Like what, how we find ourselves in Adam is by, by birth. So every child or any person you see existing finds himself in that position by birth. But our position in Christ is by faith. You see the difference? Yeah, we, we all find ourselves in Swahili, one Adam. Add one Adam. Then, then, but then it's up to you to become Mkristo, Amawakristo, in Christ, by faith. So we, we don't become Christians by just guessing, but it's a decision we have to make to become Christians. In the book of first John five, eleven to twelve, first John five, as I come to the conclusion, near conclusion, first John, chapter five, verse eleven to twelve says this. And this is the testimony that God has given us what? Beloved of God, it's a Bible study, first John, chapter five, verse eleven. First John, chapter five, verse eleven says, and this is the testimony that God has given us what? Eternal life, and this life is in his son. Who, verse twelve, he who has the son has what? Life, he who, he who does not have the son of God does not have life. Now I want to, to, to just make you, make it clear to us. We are not new lifers because we are in the fifth gong avenue, we're in this structure. We only become new lifers by accepting Christ. Are, are we together? So, so we should boast of the name new life, only after accepting Christ in our lives. Yeah, so which church do you go to? Yeah, it's true, we go to church, but are we also new lifers? We can be coming to new life. New life is, we today we are studying about new life, I think you've seen that. And, and, and we only get it by when we have the sun in us. The Bible says whoever has the sun, whoever has the sign, has life. And if you don't have the sun, you don't have life. And that testimony, God has given us eternal life. I'm wondering whether through this study of the week, you have, you can say for sure you have this eternal life, you have the life, you have the life of Christ. Choristers, as you come, I don't know if there's someone inside here, you, you, you've sat down and you've learnt about the life of Christ, the death of Christ, the resurrection of Christ, and you have to, want to have that new life. Is there someone like that? As you do that, we'll sing song, the song we sang yesterday, four hundred and twelve. Cause the song I wanted to sing, I don't know, I've never heard us sing here, three hundred and sixteen, do you know it? Three sixteen, you know it? Three sixteen is, I think should be that. When you have the sun, you have everything. Just, just confirm if you, you sing it here, three hundred and sixteen. Yeah, we'll sing three hundred and sixteen. And, um, this should better be your anthem even as a new lifer, as a Christian. That when you have Christ, let me read that text again. This is testimony God has given us eternal life, and this is in his son, whoever has life, has, has, has the son, has life. We'll sing three hundred and sixteen, um, as you meditate. I've been generous to add, to give you a time to sing, we can sing that song as we're seated, then, um, maybe we'll pray when I'm done, three hundred and sixteen.
Three one six. Um, the choristers are here, just turn to three one six, live out thy life within me. Live out thy life within me. We'll sing it while seated. Live out thy life within me, let's sing. Live out thy life within me, oh Jesus, King of Kings. Be thou thyself the answer to all my questionings. Live out the life within me, in all things have thy way. I thy transparent medium, thy glory to display. The temple has been yielded and purified of sin. Let thy shakira glory now shine forth from within. And all the earth give silence, the body henceforth be thy silent gentle servant, moved only as by thee. Its members every moment held subject to thy call. Ready to have thee used them, or not be used at all. Held without restless longing, or strain, or stress, or fret, or chafings at thy dealings, or thoughts of vain regret. But restful, calm and pliant, from bend and bias free. I waiting thy decision, when thou hast need of me. Live out thy life within me, oh Jesus, King of Kings. Be thou the glorious answer to all my questionings.
As we stand, as we stand, I just want to remind us that we belong to Adam by birth, but we belong to Christ by faith. May we have faith in Christ who's able to have us belong to him, praise God. As I come, bring this to the end, I'll ask pastor to come and just pray. And just that we make a choice to belong in Christ, to Christ, and, um, we may understand why we have this new life in Christ, may God bless us.
Let us believe and pray. Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you this morning. We exalt your name for the care and the love that you bestowed through us, and you've been with us throughout the week. You've used your manservant as a vessel so that we may understand your thoughts and your ways. We praise your name for the power of the Holy Spirit that has been with move us closer and closer to you, that when you come for the second time, dear Lord, we may be ready to meet you in the skies. Bless even the next speaker and the programs of the day, for this is my prayer in Jesus' name.